Good afternoon, everybody. It looks like it just about that time. Ms. Sullivan won't be able to be with us this afternoon for the work session, so you're stuck with me. She may be able to join us a little bit later for the regular session. But aside from running the meeting, she asked me with another task to come up with two songs for the work session. All I could do was come up with one for the budget, and that was The Beatles' "You Can't Buy Me Love." So I'm up for any suggestions for the second one on the legislative agenda. Okay, no takers? Well, with that, I guess we can get started. According to my clock, it's 4:30. And so at this time, I call to order the September 28, 2021 work session of the Maricopa Community College District Governing Board. We are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open the webpage with the live captioning. So before we start, I'll take role of the board members to see who we have here. Mr. Evans, our student representative, are you here? Mr. Evans? No. Ms. Bitter Smith, I just got a note that she's going to be a little bit late. Ms. McGrath, are you here? I think my microphone's unmuted.
Yes, I did hear her a little bit ago. Let me try and meet her.
I finally got it right. I'm here.
Hey, there you go. Ms. Smith, are you here?
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Wen? She may be a little bit late as well, Ms. Wen. And I'm here, so that's one, two, three, four. That's enough to get started. So today, we are being provided with a report on two items. First, it'll be the 2022-23 budget development, and the second will be proposed 2022 legislative agenda. So Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenters for this afternoon?
Absolutely. Dr. Narini, board members and guests that are with us here. I think maybe the song that you picked may be appropriate for both presentations. And I thought for you personally, "Back in the Saddle" again might be a good song. How's that?
Good call.
All right. So with that, let's go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gary Yacinto and team, who's our Chief Financial Officer, who's going to walk us through our very first step in the development of next fiscal year's budget. As Mrs. Sullivan said during our agenda review last year, we felt that it was a very successful process coming to our board at various points to provide updates and to get feedback, so that when we finally got to the point of approval, it was a lot less climatic than it's been in the past. And so we're hoping for consistent and continued engagement of our employees here through this process, and especially with our board that continues to provide its feedback through this process. So we're looking forward to your feedback. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gary. So thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Dr. Narini, board members, good afternoon. I am Gary Yacinto, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This is the first of four planned budget work sessions on the FY22-23 budget. Additional work sessions are planned for November, January, and March. And it's possible we could request a fifth work session in February regarding tuition fees. So as Dr. Gonzalez mentioned, we're essentially on the same cadence in bringing information and data to you on the FY22-23 budget as we did last year for the FY22 budget. Our team presentation today represents really a very early stage in developing the FY23 budget. We're continuing to gather data and information on enrollment, budget priorities, costs, and funding sources, all of which we intend to update in future presentations to you. So with me today for the presentation are Sharie Zara, who is Chief of Financial Planning and Budget, and Kim Grineo, Associate CFO and Controller. Before I get started, I'd also like to mention the recent establishment of an internal advisory budget council. The ABC Committee is comprised of a diverse membership representing colleges and the district office, and includes representatives of staff, residential faculty, adjunct faculty, the senior councils, and college presidents. And we are meeting regularly to vet and discuss budget development and recommendations. So if you could move to the next slide, please. So our agenda for today is we'll begin with just a general budget timeline describing the various general activities that occur during the course of budget development. Next, we'll present preliminary budget assumptions and general fund projections for the FY22-23 budget as of 9/24/21. And keep in mind, again, the key word here is preliminary. There's more work to be done to refine and finalize the data that we'll be presenting and bringing to you this afternoon. We'll also talk about setting budget priorities, the various categories of investments, both mandatory and discretionary that are on the table for discussion and evaluation. We'll talk about enrollment, and enrollment in terms of full-time student equivalence, which is a reflection of what we collect in tuition and fees. Then we'll have charts showing projected revenue expenditures for FY23 and a few years beyond. Again, these are very preliminary at this stage. We'll have a discussion of HERF money, the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund monies, and what they're being utilized for. And then we'll close with just a listing of the proposed budget workshops and the topics and subjects that we would intend to cover in each of those workshops. So next slide, please. All right, budget development timeline. Again, this is just a general outline of the activities that are involved in developing the budget throughout the year, reaching the final budget, which is adopted by the governing board. So July, September, we begin developing a financial plan that includes revenue expenditure estimates. We also submit a state aid request to the governor's office. August and February, we consider available resources, mandatory, and other district needs. February, the board adopts proposed tuition and fees for the upcoming fall semester. In April, the proposed budget is submitted as an information item to the board. It is the first read of the budget for FY22-23. And in May, we publish legal budget and truth and taxation notices in the newspaper. We also hold a major taxpayers briefing with ATRA and a few of its key members. And then the board holds a truth and taxation hearing and final adoption of the proposed budget in May. And then June, it's just an administrative function, where the budget office and the fiscal office upload the adopted budget to the accounting system. So that's a general outline of the things that happen during the course of budget development throughout the year to arrive at a final budget. Next slide, please. Okay, FY22-23 preliminary budget assumptions. So we begin with tuition and fees. For this year, fiscal year '22, at this early point, we're just into the fall semester. We're nevertheless projecting tuition and fee revenue down from FY22 by 7%. Currently, this fall semester, and this is a conservative estimate, currently this fall semester, FTSE enrollment is down between 6% and 7%. So tuition will be down by about the same amount if that trend continues throughout the entire fiscal year. And if we think back to last year, when the FY22 budget was built and adopted, we had projected a 1% increase in tuition revenue. So we're currently well below that projection. However, as we know more about what the spring semester is looking like, we will adjust this number for the full year. And for the fiscal year '23 budget, we're conservatively projecting tuition revenue to remain flat at the final fiscal year '22 level. Our headcount is also down 3%, somewhere around 3%, 3.5%, 3% to 3.5% so far this year. We're projecting increased property tax revenue of $13 million from new construction. The secondary to primary tax shift for capital investments will be continued as required and stated in the board resolution from last year. Also specified in the resolution, I will report to you the new tax rates. Most likely, I'll report these to you at the March work session. Ongoing revenue from propositions 301 and 207 are projected at $16 million each, for a total of $32 million for those two propositions. And of course, these monies are for workforce and STEM investments and expenditures. For the fiscal year '23 general fund budget, we anticipate, again, limited ongoing resources for funding general fund mandatory costs and discretionary investments. We will again focus on achieving a balanced budget, matching ongoing revenues to ongoing expenses and one-time resources with one-time expenditures. Funds, however, provided through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, HERF, can also provide us with a one-time funding bridge for those immediate and priority investments that need to be made during fiscal year '23. We also, in each of our budget sessions like this, discuss opportunities for augmenting resources and revenues, property taxes, tuition rates, and the third leg of the general fund stool, which has been initiated this year, developing a revenue generating model that looks at augmenting revenues through other than property taxes and tuition rates. And then, of course, the other side of the budget equation, there are opportunities for re-prioritization of programs, doing away with programs that perhaps are dated, not necessarily not used, and then focus those savings on other programs that are more important. And there's always the opportunity, as we saw last year, to examine and look at budget reductions, budget cuts on the expenditure side, if necessary. Next slide, please. Okay, setting budget priorities. And again, these are just general categories. And the note is that these funds allocated for these purposes are based on priority needs. And what's not said in that line is end resource availability. So we have two kinds of expenditures, mandatory expenditures and discretionary expenditures. So on the mandatory expenditure side, you can see those are expenditures that are either required by law, required by our own administrative rules to invest in our employees, our students, and for other purposes in our faculty as well. So they include things like the employer portion of ASRS rate increase. We had a rate increase last year. We won't know whether we have a rate increase for fiscal year '23 for a few months, but when we have that, there may be no increase. There may be some increase. We'll provide that information and build that into our budget projections. There are always software and hardware maintenance contracts that are extended and that are generally increased, have escalators built into them each and every year that must be taken care of so that we can continue to operate our enterprise systems. There are education salary adjustments for employees that are mandatory. There are presidential scholarships as well, where money is set aside for student scholarships at each of our colleges. The 60-40 faculty policy retention and retraining program. We had minimal expenses last year to effectuate this of less than $100,000, and this will be another item that we'll look at again this year. And then, as you'll hear in the regular board meeting today, our insurance premiums have increased rather significantly. In the property and casualty liability area, they've increased, but they've increased the most in our cyber insurance. And that information is contained in the item later this afternoon. And then, work still in progress is enrollment funding adjustments. That's the so-called equalization model. Again, that has not yet been finalized. It's still a work in progress, but if that's brought forward for the FY23 budget, it will be included in the budget. On the discretionary expenditure side, these are investments and expenditures for which we have needs, but need to be matched up against our resources. First and foremost, we have implementation of the second year of the five-year compensation plan that the board saw in last year's budget development process and approved. Other district-wide initiatives, we know that there will be additional expenditures in implementing the four-year degrees that will be offered beginning the fall of fiscal year '23. We're experiencing some launching expenditures now. So those have to be built and considered into the FY23 budget. Student success, there are additional investments that have been identified to improve student success. Marketing has been a big issue for us in trying to incentivize and drive enrollment by getting more information out into the public about the excellent programs that we have to offer. The other item that has been discussed last year, we didn't have the resources to deal with it, we're going again this year to take a look at, and that is moving faculty that's currently being funded out of Proposition 301 monies to be funded out of the general fund. And then, of course, there are other college and district division needs, such as workforce development needs, STEM activities, other technology needs, and the foundation that has had an excellent year in raising money may be able to do even better if there are some resources that are devoted to increasing what the foundation can do to raise money to help our students. Next slide, please. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Sharie Zara. Sharie, it's all yours.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Dr. Narini, and board members for allowing me to present today. I'm Sharie Zara, on the Chief Financial Planning and Budget. In this slide, we have the history of FTSE from 1982 to FY22, this current year. As you can see, FY11 was the highest FTSE that we've had, but you can see the steady decline in FTSE since FY11. In fact, in FY21, our FTSE is equal to FY01. The projections for FY22 is not as good as we had hoped, as Gary had mentioned. We had hoped for a 1% increase. We do have a 7% decline right now. For the future, for next year, we start gathering data from the colleges. And right now, it's estimated, proposed to have a flat enrollment for FY23 so far. And as you know, FTSE is a major component of our revenue for Maricopa College, and this is something that we'll be reviewing and giving you updates continuously throughout this process. And we'll also, in future presentations, be working on various scenarios for future presentations. Next slide, please, Elsa. So as you know, that we're still gathering data, and this is just, we're going to try and give you as much data as possible throughout this presentation and future presentations. This slide is a comparison of 1982 FTSE to 2022 FTSE. The FTSE and the tuition per credit line is in the red. And so what we're doing is basically comparing each year of FTSE and how our tuition rates have been throughout these years. Just kind of information to look at and see, is there any correlation between tuition and FTSE? As you can see, in FY16, we had, per credit was $84. In FY17, it was $86 per credit. FY18, 86. And then in FY19, we decreased by $1, and it's stayed the same since then. Next slide, please, Elsa. This slide is the general fund revenue versus expenditures. We're just comparing and analyzing the general fund revenue versus expenditures. As you can see, in FY20, we have a balanced budget. In FY21, we have a balanced budget with the help of $39.3 million in the HERF lost revenue funds. FY22 is estimated to balance with the help of $27.4 million of HERF lost revenue funds. FY23, with this scenario, we have a flat FTSE. We have our base budget for expenditures. We have the compensation plan and required expenditures. We see that the gap is starting to form between higher expenditures than the revenue that we're bringing in. In FY24, we incorporate a 2% FTSE increase. We continue with the base budget as is. We have continuation of the compensation plan and then required expenditures. We start to have a higher expenditures than revenue in this scenario. So as you can see, in the future, if revenue does not increase or expenditures do not reduce, we will not be able to balance the budget between revenue and expenditures. Next slide, please, Elsa. In this slide is the general fund balance for Fund One. In FY23, the projection is with the assumption that FTSE stays flat. We receive our new construction property taxes, which is roughly about $13 million. Our base budget stays the same, and we implement the compensation plan and the mandatory expenditures. The undesigned native fund balance gets reduced by $50 million and goes into a negative of $3 million for FY23 in that scenario. In FY24, the assumption is a 2% FTSE and tuition increase revenue. We have our new construction of property taxes that will be about $13.4 million. We implement the third year of the compensation plan and mandatory expenditures. Our undesigned native fund balance is reduced by $58 million and goes into a negative of $64.3 million. So as you can see, we're going to have to be running many other scenarios during this process. And now I will be turning it over to Kim Grineo. Next slide, please, Elsa.
Thank you, Sharie. Good afternoon, Dr. Narini and members of the board. I am Kim Grineo, Associate CFO and Controller for Maricopa. I will be sharing some information about the federal HERF funding, as Gary has talked about as well. I'm sorry, I'm on my wrong page. Just as a reminder, the three acts create the HERF umbrella, CARES, CRISA, and ARP. And they've been in place since back to March of 2020. Some examples of how we have used the funding so far are certainly emergency student aid grants. We have also, as Sharie has referenced in her part of the presentation, recovered some of the lost revenues due to FTSE losses, covered some of the Maricopa Opportunity Grants, and also covered lost tuition related to tuition discounts. And we'll talk a little bit more about that piece and system-wide efforts on the last slide of my portion of the presentation. We have also discharged student-owed balances in order to re-engage students. That was an activity that was absolutely encouraged by the Department of Education, knowing that we likely had many students who were not able to fulfill their debts and wanted to get them restarted into college and be able to get transcripts and such. As you've heard previously, spent dollars on college safety and operations, enhanced cleaning, cleaning and disinfecting supplies, PPE. We've also trained faculty and staff for virtual environment, also increases in technology to enhance student support in the virtual environment. Just a reminder on the dates that we're working with, all funds under the HERF umbrella are awarded through May of 2022. We do understand that there will be an opportunity for a one-year no-cost extension through May of 2023. My understanding is also that that window for requesting the extension won't open until next spring. And typically, for Department of Education, is open a month or two months prior to the end of the current award term. But we are working with our program officer to find out if there's any way for us to find out earlier if we can extend the timeline that we have for the expenses. Next slide, please, Elsa. These next few slides you've seen previously, these are just updates in figures. So I'll go through these fairly quickly. For the student aid allocations, I just want to point out that much of the $91 million remaining is from ARP, the American Rescue Plan, which were the latest allocations we received. And the anticipation at this point is that we will award students for the student aid grants for fall 2021 term, and those will occur in late October, early November. The eligibility and methodologies are being finalized with the colleges. We will see significant use of the remaining balance before calendar year end is what we are anticipating. Next slide, please, Elsa. For the institutional allocations, these are expenses and encumbrances as of 9/14/21. So this will obviously continue to evolve as we move forward through the year. It does include district-wide lost revenues, which we recovered as of June 30, 2021. And again, we'll talk about that in coming slides. It, however, does not include lost revenues that the colleges are looking to recover, and these are primarily from auxiliary activities. We will have those done for 2021. We just have some nuances we're working through on those. And that last line, estimated fiscal '22 lost revenues, we'll talk a little bit more on Slide 14 about that one. So next slide, please, Elsa. These are the HSI or Hispanic-serving allocations. These are for minority-serving institutions, and we have, in the past, had six of our colleges were HSI-eligible or designated. As of fiscal '21, we actually have nine of our 10 colleges. So in previous presentations, you've seen six of our colleges. In this one, you see Rio Salado, Chandler Gilbert, and Paradise Valley added. You also have an agenda item before you this evening that is requesting acceptance of additional funds that those three colleges in particular are able to receive under the CRISA allocation. The numbers you're seeing here are from the ARP allocation. So they're basically going back in time and trying to catch up the colleges that were determined to be eligible nationwide as of fiscal '21. So the next schedule you see from me may have those additional figures included. So next slide, please. Thank you, Elsa. So this slide is a little bit more meaty and the one that I'll probably spend a little bit more time on. You have not seen this one before. And this is trying to get at our system-wide look at the institutional allocations. And this is only the institutional pot. You can see the $186 million at the top for the total that were awarded to all of our colleges combined. And just to clarify, the amounts recovered for fiscal 2021, lost revenue related to FTSE was $23.6 million to cover the tuition discounts that were approved by the governing board last summer, about $15.6 million. And then also Maricopa Opportunity Grants, which were approved by the governing board last summer at $8.7 million. That was a total of $48 million that we were able to recover and essentially charge to, if you will, the HERF funds. That's about 25.8% of the total of the $186 million that was allocated. And as Shari spoke to in her part of the presentation, we do have estimated recoveries for 2022, and that is lost revenue related to FTSE at about $27 million or another 14% of the total institutional allocations. And then, because I'm an accountant and I have to tie everything back together, our other expenses and encumbrances as of September 14 of $28 million gets us to the same amount remaining of about $82.5 million. Another thing I want to share is while we have recovered about 25.8% of the institutional allocations, we have designated that about $38.7 million of that $48 million is proposed to be used to support system-wide software solutions and improvements in Maricopa's admissions and registration system. The remaining $9.3 million is proposed to offset system-wide revenue losses from the lower enrollment, which we all know we experienced in fiscal '21. And we are also anticipating that the $27 million in lost revenues related to FTSE for fiscal '22 will also be used to offset lost revenues. We were, obviously, as I think everyone was hoping, we'd have a bounce back in enrollment in fiscal '22. So far, as of yet, that hasn't happened. We're still hopeful for spring, of course, but we want to make sure we designate a piece of that fiscal year '22 or of the institutional allocations to cover some of those fiscal '22 losses as well. And that's the end of my piece, and I will turn it back over to Gary Yacinto. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, so here's what we plan to bring to you in the next few sessions. So today, preliminary assumptions and a walk-through of the HERF monies and where we are, where we stand today. November will be an important work session with the board because we're going to be bringing a budget update on revenues and expenditures. We're also going to be bringing to you Proposition 207 and 301, revenues and proposed expenditure priorities, as well as STEM, the use of the STEM monies. And then also general fund, funding priorities. And we'll also be discussing with you the capital budget for FY '23. In January of next calendar year, we'll do another update of revenues and expenditures with you. We'll be discussing tuition and fees revenues, as well as diving into the expenditure limitation and where we sit with respect to the expenditure limitation and the use of our carryforward capacity. And then February, the board adopts tuition and fees. You know, if we hold a work session, there'll be a budget follow-up and cleanup at that point. In March, we should have everything together pretty close to final, based on all the input that we receive from board members during the work sessions. And then in April, again, first read, and in May, the governing board adopts the budget. So Elsa, next slide. I think that is the conclusion of our presentation. And Dr. Norene, we're ready for questions. I know that we may not have a whole lot of time before the next presentation, but to the extent there are questions, we're happy to address them.
Board members, are there any questions? Well, you must have done a very thorough job. So thank you.
Dr. Norene?
Yes?
I'm sorry. First of all, this is Susan. I am on the call. I got in about eight minutes in, so I heard the bulk of Gary's presentation. So for the record, I'm here, but I did have a quick question. Gary, you mentioned looking at some cost-saving opportunities and hunted in a couple of those. Is there any singular cost-saving opportunity that you've identified that you think will be substantial going forward? Or are we talking about really bundling a series of smaller ones to deal with our challenges?
Thank you, Dr. Norene, Ms. Bittersmith. Yes, if you recall from last year, and I'm trying to think when, whether you were on board when this was presented, but as we were talking about the deep dive in enrollment in fiscal year '21, we did provide a list of potential savings. And it was, I don't know, somewhere between a dozen to two dozen ideas on where we might be able to gain efficiencies or cut costs. And so we'll be presenting a similar list to you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much for the presentation, and we'll be moving on now to the next presentation on the proposed 2022 legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. This is Darcy Renfro, Chief Workforce and Economic Development Officer for the district. And I am here actually on behalf of Alexis Storff, our Government Relations Director, who had a baby 10 days ago, a healthy nine-pound boy named Dewey. So you are, you have me tonight, but this is work that has been collected over the last several months and with lots of input, and I'm excited to present it here to the board.
Thank you so much.
All right. And what I have done with the legislative agenda is, first, you all should have received a hard copy of a document or received a document that lists the 10 state, proposed state agenda items, and then what was originally eight federal items. There has been, at the request of Dr. Thor, we added a ninth item, which is actually listed in your federal agenda, item number five, relating to path to citizenship. So that is a new version of this draft. A jet document was distributed to Elsa yesterday, and this presentation I do today, we'll just walk through each of those items briefly. And we can, and I can answer any questions as we go through each item, if that's okay with you, Dr. Norene.
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. So first off, the internal process and timeline, as I mentioned, we had an internal committee that convened to review what, where we left off last year and what might need to change. I will tell you, the state agenda items are very similar, not identical, but very similar to what you all supported and voted on last year. The timeline for this, we presented to CEC, and now we're here for the work session, and our hope is that the board will vote on this legislative agenda come October, in the October meeting. Next slide, please. The goals of having the, of having a legislative agenda is it sets boundaries for staff that we can move quickly in responding to issues if they are either contrary to or line up with the board's agenda. It gives us a lot of guidance and is really helpful as things pick up at the legislature. It also helps ongoing, you know, we continue to, we hope, increase and improve the communication to board members about what is happening at the legislature. And we're proposing in this year's legislative agenda to adopt a federal agenda and perhaps then move forward with some additional federal efforts, which we have not done in at least the last four years. Next slide, please. So state agenda recommendation number one is around supporting funding for expanding teacher prep programs, including, we called out specifically, including support for high school teachers to get their qualifications for college-level instruction. This has been an issue. We got some funding from the state in the last budget to assist high school teachers to get their certifications, particularly in math and science subjects, so that they're qualified to teach college level, at the college level. We would like to continue to seek funding through the Arizona Teacher Academy for that purpose. Number two, next, thank you. This is the ongoing support for STEM workforce development. We did get our entire formula amount in the FY '22 budget. It was one time, however, and what we would like to do is get that full formula amount, but get it as an ongoing appropriation. Currently, as indicated in Gary's Ekeitos presentation, we are having conversations now about where that $10.4 million should go. There were about $30 million worth of requests that were sent in for that $10.4 million. So we'd like to continue and then have some ability to be able to count on that as an ongoing revenue source if we are able to get it established that way in this year, in the upcoming budget. Next slide, please. Support funding to enhance wraparound basic needs and student support. So this is an ongoing interest of ours and the legislatures to continue to support students and not just tuition and fees, but also other supports that they need. We know our students need to be successful as college students. We also know the state has yet to establish any state-supported student financial aid for community college students, and we would like them to do so and would ask that it be a broader opportunity to ensure that students can be successful. So that is a, that would be a proactive agenda item that we would be working on for the upcoming session. We did work on this with the universities last session, and unfortunately, as things played out, we were not included in the state's promise appropriation that goes to university students who are eligible. So we would like to change that in the upcoming session and get community college students that support from the state. Number four. Supporting expanded scholarship opportunities for community college students. These are very specific to short-term training opportunities. This is mirrors a agenda item in the federal, proposed, in a federal recommendation that expands eligibility to individuals who are taking short-term courses. And even though we, our recommendation doesn't include necessarily just non-credit, it would be for a non-credit, the main umbrella term and the main relief we're looking for are students in short-term training and enrollment with us. Next item, next slide, please. Recommendation number five is really a defensive, well, it is written as though we would be offensively looking to get the 0.6% sales tax to 1%. What the statement really means is that we want to make sure that if the legislature cracks open that statute, that we make sure that community colleges are left whole. And should there be a proposal to increase to 1%, we would certainly, that would be beneficial, but I don't anticipate today that we are going to have members making that request. A couple of years are introducing legislation to that effect. Senator Fan introduced something similar a couple of years ago, but this last session, there were no conversations around 301, but we want to be prepared if some begin. Next slide. This is item number six, we're asking to preserve our new, newly adopted statute allowing us to provide back lawyer degrees and including the maintenance of our local decision-making, this board's decision-making and governance of such issues. Don't anticipate, as we sit here today, that we're going to have distractors, but anything can happen, and we want to be prepared for that. Next slide. State recommendation number seven, protect and expand local district authority and governance. This is a general, this is a general statement that protects this board's ability to, for local control and maintains autonomy and authority. And we're also hoping to minimize any unfunded mandates or unnecessary bureaucracies or administrative challenges. So in essence, we're always looking at those legislation that impacts in some way our business and not necessarily, not necessarily the teaching and learning of our business, but it could be things that are related to our healthcare systems or benefits or retirement and whatnot. So we're always looking to make sure that we are protecting our ability to make decisions as a district and this board's ability to make those decisions as to what to spend funds on and how to make decisions and what to decide. Next slide, please. State agenda item number eight is to expand opportunities for high school students to get dual enrollment or co-enrollment. What we're really emphasizing here is our ability to incentivize dual enrollment and early college opportunities for students. We know early college works for high school students. We know getting credits, accumulating credits helps students understand they can succeed in college and are generally more successful when they've been able to have that experience. We also know there are partner districts in Maricopa County who have very few students able to, that are accessing dual enrollment opportunities through Maricopa, and some of those have to deal with instructor issues, as mentioned in the first recommendation. But we're also hoping that there's some incentive to continue to encourage students and families to look to dual enrollment as an option, to increase the amount, to decrease the amount of time and money spent toward a degree or credential. This, I will say, this topic is becoming a very hot issue in a lot of the business circles currently, the chamber circles, the GPL circles. Dual enrollment is popping up as a big priority issue because it would help us move the needle on attainment and college-going. Our college-going rates in Arizona as a whole are extremely low, and there is good evidence that dual enrollment and other early college opportunities, as I stated earlier, will increase college-going and also college completion. Next slide, please. And then number nine on the state recommendation, we would like to maintain our position as the adult basic ed provider and high school equivalency provider. This came up, this is a perennial issue. This came up, this is a perennial issue, at least for the last three sessions of private nonprofits who want to get into the high school equivalency business. And their model is about six times more expensive than our model. As this board knows, we do our adult basic ed, all of it through Rio Soto College and have had amazing success. We would like to continue that and are always looking for opportunities to increase our ability to meet those needs because there is a huge demand for adult basic ed. And there are not currently enough, there is currently not enough providers in the field, but we want the growth of the providers in the field of adult basic ed to be the community colleges. And finally, number 10 on the state agenda. We are talking about expenditure limitation and making changes. This recommendation does state, does put a, articulates a specific strategy, which is to amend the footsie definition statute as it relates to expenditure limitation. We do not get footsie funding from the state, but we know that our sister districts do. And so the footsie, changing the footsie formula, the footsie definition and statute as it relates to things outside expenditure limitation might be a bit too too high a road to cross. But as it relates to expenditure limitation, we think this is a very good and solid strategy to modernize the expenditure limitation statutes in a way that better reflects our students with 74% of our students being part-time. Having the expenditure limitation be based on full-time students of 15 credit hours two semesters in a row doesn't make a lot of sense for community colleges. So we'd like to minimally mirror the federal definition, but we'd like to have it better reflect the actual student patterns for community college students. So I'm going to pause on the state before we get into the federal and see if there are questions on any of those 10 items.
Board members, are there any questions on the state agenda?
Hi, this is Ms. Smith. I have a question. Thank you, Darcy, for the presentation. Going back to state agenda item number five about proposition 301. Can you please help me understand what you meant when you were saying you want to make sure the community colleges are left whole? I think perhaps I'm a little rusty about how this is working, so I didn't quite understand that. Can you elaborate, please?
Yes, Dr. Narini, Ms. Smith, absolutely. So because this has moved from being voter protected into a statute, it can be amended at any time. And currently, the way that the formula is set up, it's a 0.6 cents tax, sales tax. We, the community colleges, get 3% of that total. That's all we get. And so, and the majority of which will go to Maricopa because of our size. So all said, it's about 15 to 16 million dollars. It's been a little high the last year because sales were very high during the pandemic. So it's a little bit higher than that, but most years it's around 15, 18 million dollars. So we just don't want to go below 3%. So if, for example, so we don't want to, one, go below 3% on a, as it currently sits. If it were increased to a one cent sales tax, for example, we'd like to not, we'd also like our piece of the pie to stay consistent. So it would also increase as opposed to, let's say, we wanted to, legislature wanted to increase it to a full penny. And then they kept the percentage, they lowered the percentage of the community colleges so that we wouldn't get more than the 15 to 18 million dollars a year. So we would want to, we would fight against that, or we would at least want to maintain 3% of a full cent sales tax. Is that, am I making sense?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions about the state agenda?
Dr. Narini?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Actually, the follow-up to Ms. Smith's great question on item number five. Darcy, you were explaining what it was intending to mean and the way it's currently written. And I'm wondering, just because this is obviously going to be a public document at some point, would it make sense to go back and maybe do a little bit of tweaking to that so it's clear? Do you have your explanation?
Yeah, Ms. Bitter Smith, Dr. Narini, I think that's a good idea. Because what this makes it look like, we're going to proactively go seek a penny sales tax. And I don't think that's what we, that's not the message. So that is a good suggestion and we will work on that for final, when we bring it to the board for final review.
Thank you. And just, I just want to add one other thing. I think when I was first on the board in January, we're doing this, I was suggesting this should be done earlier, which everybody, I think, already had presumed. So thank you for having this at this point in the year. This is exactly the right time to have this discussion. I appreciate it.
Great. You're so welcome. We are very happy to have this discussion now because, as you know, it won't be long until lots of organizations are asking us for our legislative agenda and we do not want to provide it until this board has spoken.
Well, I appreciate it and thank you for getting it together.
Well, thank you. Anyone else before we move on to the federal agenda? All right, go for part two.
Okay, so this is getting into the federal agenda. Again, this is new, although it is new to Maricopa. Most of the recommendations here come out of ACCT or AACC language. So it is probably familiar to this board, most of these statements in here. What we would do with this agenda item would be able to continue to advocate and support our delegation in matters that they're taking the lead on, but may also want to get more engaged at the federal level. And again, having boundaries and guidance from this board will help us help direct that work significantly. So federal agenda recommendation number one is to continue stimulus support to assist students during the pandemic recovery. Again, this, we are, there isn't a particular focus here. I think later in the document, there's more language around short-term. So reskilling efforts and upskilling efforts that are being proposed with Pell. But this is just a general statement of support for students to continue supporting students through the pandemic. Next item. So this is a, item number two, support the development of a dedicated community college job training program and the bolstering of other workforce-focused federal programs such as CTE, Work for WEOWA and Adult Basic and Literacy Act. So we want to protect those current federal grants and the Perkins Grants and WEOWA. And to the extent that they're being expanded, we would like to, this board's support to encourage that as those issues are introduced in Congress. Next slide. Number three, there are considerable, there are on the table currently changes to Pell that are being recommended. And as this, this statement talks about minimizing operational inefficiencies, such as ending the taxation on Pell grants. And then the other part of this is really the increasing maximum award and allow for short-term programs, including non-credit. This is going to, we think, given, again, the, given the nature of our students and their course-taking patterns, we know 74% of them are only taking, are taking part courses, part-time. And this should be open up Pell to some of those individuals who are unable, for whatever reason, to take a full load. Also, it does encourage what we think is going to be a continuously growing market of individuals who are underemployed or whose employers want to support them by increasing their skills and then thus, and their earning potential through short-term, short-term skill credentials. So this could be a really important piece of, to help our students, that 74% of our students who may or may not, that's probably not the right number. So I'll take that back because that doesn't necessarily mean that 74% are not currently Pell-eligible, but we think it would expand the number of students that are Pell-eligible. So we would like the board to support those changes. Next slide, please. Number four, support investments in college access affordability enrollment. And these are certain, including proposals to create tuition-free community college, the details of which we are still learning. And we put in here a very specific model that was created in Arizona and is going national. And was, a bill was introduced by Senators Sinema and Romney to take this earn-to-learn model national. And so we, because it's local and we have a lot of, there's a lot of support in Arizona, we wanted to specifically put learn to earn in the agenda in addition to supporting some of the other enhancements that are being proposed right now, including the tuition-free community college with some match component. So there's a lot to unpack in that. But there are really two, two things here we're asking this board to support. One is the proposals around in Build Back Better Agenda, as well as Congress, some bills have been introduced to provide free community college and also support our locally grown earn-to-learn program that creates savings opportunities for students, provides financial literacy and has wraparound services and supports that has been very successful in Arizona. Next item. Support legislation that would establish a path to citizenship for qualifying undocumented students who entered the US as minors. This is the item that was added into the draft legislative agenda last week. This has to do with enacting the Dream Act and letting, providing dreamers with permanent status so they can, they can get in-state tuition. Currently, we are unable to do that for individuals who have graduated from our high schools, who have been in Arizona most of their lives. We are unable, or in Maricopa County, we currently are required to charge them out-of-state tuition. So a path to citizenship is really the only federal answer to solving that problem. And so we are asking this board support. And number six, strengthen resources to Hispanic serving institutions. We have nine out of 10 of our colleges, our HSIs. And we want to monitor and continue to promote student services and funding as those issues are being proposed. We think it's an important designation. It helps Maricopa. That designation helps us in a lot of different ways and it's very real and meaningful. And so we just want to continue to be able to, to be able to support any proposals that strengthen HSI in its stand. And number seven. So this is the first time in many years that delegation, that our congressmen and senators, representatives and senators have been asking for ideas for funding. So we're, that had been off the table for many years. And this year, we got some requests, members, particularly our two senators had sent links around saying, if you would like appropriation, specific appropriation, let us know what it is. And so we would like the board's support to submit requests as appropriate. And we would certainly, that those requests further, this is just to give us a sense that this board would support individual appropriation requests on behalf of this district, the details of which we would absolutely discuss with the full board or at least the Public Policy Committee. I'm not getting that name right, Public Policy Committee. And then number eight. Supporting basic needs. So again, this is an expansion on the true of financial aid for students at federal level that really takes into account the true cost of attendance. And for our students, that's a lot of things and, you know, including housing, food. And we have a lot of food insecurity within Arizona, within Maricopa County, and as well as mental health needs and medical expenses. And so we would want to, we would hope to be able to support efforts to expand the student financial aid to meet those basic needs. And finally, number nine, again, this is similar to our state. We want to ensure that we're maximizing our local control and not, and not getting federal unfunded mandates from the federal government or the state government. So this is just in general statement that we are looking to, we will look at legislation, federal legislation with an eye towards ensuring that we are maximizing our local, this board's local control. So that is it for the federal agenda and I will answer questions. Hopefully, I can.
Okay, board members, are there any questions about the federal side of things?
This is Ms. Smith. I have a few questions. Thank you for this update on the federal side. And I guess I could have also had this question on the state side, but I'll pose it here for the federal. Are the agenda items listed in order of priority? And can you comment on which of these are the top priority if they are not listed in that order? I'll pause for you to respond before I get to my other questions.
Yes, Ms. Smith, Dr. Narini, they are not put in any particular prioritization order. I will say on my, the prioritization from my vantage point, based on kind of what we're hearing out there, also what's on the table. And we've had a lot of interaction with this administration in DC. So it's happening, what we hear here in Arizona at various chamber tables and at the legislature, but also we've had a lot of outreach from the Biden administration, from various agencies, seeking input and providing information to us. So I would say, based on that, the two big priorities for us on the state legislative side is expenditure limitation relief. We need to fix that outdated statute if we can. And getting additional, getting state support for our students, whether that comes in the form of financial aid for dual enrollment students, for high school students seeking to take college-level courses or for our students in general. Yeah, those would be the priorities, I would say, for the state agenda. On the federal agenda, there are a lot of priorities in here. And I think anything, any of these items, and there are several that are in the Bidens, that are in Biden's proposal, are going to have a significant impact. We're just now pulling together the data to understand those impacts really well. So we're digging into what we know from the House legislation. The Senate is still, or last I checked, still working through some of the finer points. But those Pell changes are really critical and particularly on the short-term training side. I just, it's just where the market is shifting, where people are, and we need to be meeting our students where they are and requiring every student just that can't take a full 12, 15 credit hours. So I think that's going to be a very important one for us. But I think all of the items, you know, in free community college is going to be a big topic of conversation. What we're, what we're, what we don't know yet is exactly what that looks like in terms of the state's match requirement and what our state legislation And what our state legislature, how they will react. So this, that topic is going to be a hot topic. Should this, this, should this some form of free community college tuition make it out of Congress? We will have lots of dialogue in Arizona about how to meet the match requirements. We have heard the, recently the match for the first year would be zero and then it would start to build from there. And there it may be the possibility of using other sources other than state dollars for that match. As long as they're not supplanting. Existing investments in community college students. So those are going to be the, the big topics, I think, that will take a lot of the. Energy for this upcoming session, this upcoming year.
Thank you. I'll just have a reaction and then I have one other question. For the Pell Grant modernization, I think it would be helpful in subsequent meetings. For us to get a sense of how many students will be impacted if the. Pell eligibility is modernized. And I think it would be helpful to emphasize. Both in terms of the, if there are changes in terms of. The income levels the students need to have in order to be eligible, but then specifically more of the short term credentials are offered. By really emphasizing just how many of Maricopa's students are taking those short term students. So just making sure that. The board has data to support your claim that that would be the real game changer for Maricopa. Because then we can be effective advocates.
Understood. We are put, putting together a work group to. Really dig into that data so we can provide that information and we'll bring that back before the board considers in October.
Great. And then I just had a question regarding. How the team is staffed with regard to federal operations. Do you currently have any consultants or others that you are working with to help you advance your federal agenda?
Ms. Smith, currently, no, we do not. We work within our membership organization. So again, act, our, our board is very active in ACCT. We also work through A C C and get a lot of information from them, but we don't have our own federal presidents or staff. We, we work, A C four has been a source of information, but they do not have a federal, federal staff either. But Pima Community College District does have a federal lobbyist, so we get a lot of information from them as well. Currently though, we, we need to, we're taking that into consideration, given the great amount of activity that is upon us. That we may need to consider putting a federal team together.
Great. Dr. Gonzalez, perhaps in a future meeting, you could keep us abreast of. Whether or not you're thinking about expanding, because it seems like there's a lot of activity and this really might be one of the most. Important moments for community colleges with regard to interest from the federal government. And so I just want to make sure that we're properly staffed to take advantage of this unique moment in time.
Mrs. Smith, thank you very much for your question and observation, and I would wholeheartedly agree with you that. Unless we've got a federal presence there, we're not likely going to be in a good place to take advantage of this opportunity that's in front of us. And so. I think that by, by the time that we get to our next meeting where we'll continue to finalize this legislative agenda. For you and the rest of the board, that we could possibly also present what our plans are to ensure that we have federal presence. As Darcy said, our Alexis is out and I expect her to be returning soon part time. And so her input will be valuable through that process as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Dr. Norene? Just to follow up to Ms. Smith's comments about the federal agenda. As you know, President Sullivan recently appointed the Public Affairs Committee, which is comprised of several board members. I believe part of our charge is just to help work with our government affairs staff on some of these issues. And I know many board members have relationships with at least the Arizona delegation on federal issues. And so I think that's part of a resource base that we have, that we can, can be utilized. Perhaps more than it has been in the past, given the correct observation that things are getting a little hotter and heavier in the federal side.
Dr. Norene, if I may respond to Mrs. Bitter Smith's comment. And thank you, Mr. Bitter Smith, you, you're reading my mind. It's part of my first step in that process is to convene this group. To see how we might develop a game plan to approach this on a federal level. So be looking, be looking for a meeting here soon to have that discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Dr. Gonzalez.
Dr. Norene?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Thor.
Thank you very much. And, and thank you, Darcy and Alexis and Abstention, the others that. Worked on this excellent, both state and federal legislative agenda. And thank you for accommodating my request that we address the dreamers. First, a comment on what used to be called earmarks. It has a. A gentler name now, I think. But it's really great to see the opportunity to submit requests to our congressional delegation. And I've been around long enough to remember some of the significant allocations that we were. Specifically, I remember the Hispanic Nursing Program at South Mountain. That Congressman Ed Pastor. Championed for us as well as many other, other programs that he did as well. And then the East Valley Veterans Center. Was able to be funded thanks to Congressman Harry Mitchell. Again, championing that initiative for us. So we have a long and, and very positive history with these kinds of things. So I do hope that we'll take advantage of it. I wanted to follow up on the discussion of tuition free community colleges. And, you know, we may well know in the next couple of weeks whether that's going to receive congressional support or not. So I'm glad to see it in the federal agenda. But my question, Darcy, is if it does get authorized by the Congress. In our state agenda, do we have somewhere in here the ability to advocate for? The state match, should that turn out to be a requirement?
Dr. Thor, I was thinking the exact same thing as of the words were coming out of my mouth. And yes, we need to make sure it does, because that will then turn. Should that happen, it will turn into, as I was talking about, what our priorities are and what's going to be hot next year, that is going to be a big one. Should it get authorized? So let me, I will review the current draft with that in mind. And if, if it doesn't squarely fit, we will add an item that makes clear. That we are asking for support to obtain state funds to meet the match requirements. To enable our students to go to community college for free.
Right. And you might not even have to be quite that direct. You, you perhaps could say. Should, you know, a college promise program or a tuition free community college program be implemented at the federal level? You know, work with the legislature and state officials to ensure that we are able to accept those funds.
Yes. Got it. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thor. And, and I also want to thank the, the Public Affairs Committee, just for the work. That, that was so great in, in last session, but I, I think that ability to. To reach those connections and that for things like earmarks and other items is going to be extremely helpful.
That's all my questions or comments, Dr. Norene.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I just had, I just had one, I was going to follow up with Ms. Smith's comment about the, the Pell Grant. And, and the information that she was asking, I don't know if you can get this information, but. How it's going to impact some of our students, especially the workforce development students and the short term program students. Because right now the Pell Grant, you, you have to have your high school diploma or equivalency to, to be eligible. And just see if that, if that's going to impact or if we can figure out if that's going to impact some of our students, especially for some of those short term programs. And, and will that, will that be one of the things that we're lobbying for to, to change at the Pell Grant requirements?
Dr. Norene, I understand the question and we will look at that.
Thank you. Okay, were there, so there were no other questions or concerns? Dr. Gonzalez, if you had any, any last words of wisdom for us or are we?
Dr. Norene, thank you. I'm not sure about words of wisdom, but certainly words of appreciation for taking part in this discussion so early. It, it, it feels better to have started this process so much earlier than we have in the past. So, so thank you. And we look forward to our continued conversations and especially the work that's going to be involved in, in this legislative, these legislative sessions coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all, all the presenters and all the work that they put into, to our work session tonight. And with that, that will conclude our work session for this evening. So we're going to take a, a quick break. Everybody stay tuned. The regular governing board meeting will begin at six thirty on the same bat channel. So we'll see you at six thirty. Or hear you at six thirty.
Dr. Dr. Norene? Do we log off and log back in? Are we to stay logged on?
I think we can just stay logged in. That's what, that was the word of advice I got, was just to stay logged in, can mute to. And call you back at six thirty.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September Board Meeting for the Maricopa Community College Governing Board. At this time, I'd like to call to order the meeting of, or call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa College. Maricopa County Community College Governing Board for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Start the meeting, do a roll call of members. Mr. Evans, our student representative, are you here? Mr. Evans? Ms. Bitter, Ms. Bitter Smith?
I'm here.
All right. Ms. McGrath, are you here?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, are you back? She said she might be a little bit late coming back. Are you back in though? Okay, I'll let you know when she's in. Dr. Thor?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Ms. Nguyen? No? Well, I make four, so I think we have a quorum and we can proceed. Ms. Smith said she'd let me know she'd be, might be a couple of minutes late and should let me know when she's back in. And Ms. Smith, Mrs. Sullivan won't be able to make it tonight. As we move forward, we have two substitutions. Ms. Judy Sanchez, Chief Development Officer for the Maricopa Community College Foundation will be substituting for Mr. Brian Spicker, President and Chief Executive Officer. And Mark Demp will be here for Dr. Cohen, the Vice Chancellor of Information Technology. So we'll start off with the Faculty Executive Council Report. It'll be a verbal report by Mr. Sasha Redditch. Mr. Redditch?
Good evening, everyone. Have you noticed that MCCCD is a busy place these days? Maricopa continues to work on implementing guided pathways. On operationalizing the brand new faculty agreement. On centralizing IT services to save money and avoid redundancy. And on retooling the enrollment process to make it faster and more user friendly. Additionally, we're also unveiling the district's three strategic priorities and launching our new four-year degree programs. Oh, and on top of that, we're pursuing the chancellor's nine governing board goals for the year. Well, tonight I wanted to update you on how the faculty are trying to move some of these initiatives forward for our district. While we're just beginning to craft our new baccalaureate programs. It's already clear that faculty will be heavily involved in every stage of the process. We have faculty on the steering committee, faculty on the college recommendation committees. And faculty instructional councils ready to formulate the plans to get these programs to launch. What's more, faculty are chomping at the bit to engage in the process. Knowing full well that it takes a massive effort to roll out an entire four-year degree program. The most common feedback I've heard from faculty members is raw enthusiasm. To dive right into this brand new and long awaited expansion of our mission. Additionally, we agree with the district leadership's approach of moving carefully enough to get it right from the very beginning. So that our students can extract the maximum benefit from these degrees. It seems clear that the faculty will be eager partners in this ongoing effort for many years to come. Another important project is the rollout of our brand new faculty agreement. After a few years of intense effort, this document is decidedly a beta version. But because of the skill and dedication of the drafting team, we have a higher quality initial document than any reasonable observer could have anticipated. Nonetheless, it is the most significant policy change for the faculty in decades. Well, the good news is that we are successfully adjusting to this new rule set. As I mentioned last time, over the summer, the Faculty Executive Council held a book club. To bring faculty leadership up to speed on the contents of the new document. Now those faculty leaders are extending their efforts by holding additional book clubs for interested faculty across the entire district. Faculty are also finalizing their new department charters to align with requirements introduced in the faculty agreement. And we are deciding how to parcel out supervision work and pay in accordance with new faculty agreement guidelines. Suffice it to say that while this document has caused massive changes to every aspect of faculty life. We are rising to the occasion and making all the necessary adjustments. Of the district's major initiatives, Guided Pathways is the longest running and the closest to completion. The goal of Guided Pathways is supremely student oriented. To help each student find the classes that lead to their chosen goals. And to provide them with the three hundred and sixty degree wraparound support necessary to let them reach those goals. Faculty have been crafting the pathways part of Guided Pathways for a few years now. Setting up semester by semester guides for students in a chosen degree path. Now, these guides are living documents, needing frequent adjustment in response to new innovations and discoveries. Not to mention requirement alterations by our local instructional councils, by national education councils, by certification boards and by transfer partners. That's why this fall, we have eighteen separate teams working to either refine existing pathways. Or create brand new ones in programs ranging from commercial real estate to Kubernetes. Now, on the guided side of Guided Pathways, we're unveiling the district's new first year student experience. That's our name for a suite of support structures to give our students the knowledge, skills and habits necessary to succeed in college and beyond. The first year student experience includes gateway courses, enhanced advising, co-curricular experiences, career exploration and much more. By putting all of these pieces together, our Guided Pathways work is revolutionizing our student experience. So much so that the rest of the educational world is taking notice. In addition to a forthcoming academic publication summarizing our work. Four separate community college districts have asked our faculty to come and present about these efforts so that they can try and follow in our footsteps. The ancient Greek philosopher Heraclitus once wrote that the only constant in life is change. In Maricopa, we are. In Maricopa, we are constantly experiencing change. Luckily, our faculty, staff, and administration have learned to embrace it. This year, we will once again face a wide array of changes that will challenge everything about how we function as a system. And once again, our employees are not only willing, but excited to rise to the challenge and to ensure that our students get the highest-quality experience that we can provide. After having seen how their dedication and skill has transformed our district so far, I can't wait to see what comes next. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Next, we have the Adjunct Faculty Report. Reporting for the adjunct faculty is Dr. Terry Train. She submitted a written report and requires no speaking time. Next up, we have the Employee Senate Report. Ms. Anna Chandler and Ms. Shannon Monge. Ms. Chandler and Ms. Monge, are you ready for your report?
Yes, Dr. Narini, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Narini, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, college presidents, CEC, and colleagues. Thank you for your continued support and having us present updates to all of you on the work Employee Representation is currently working on. My name is Anna Chandler, and I am one of the co-presidents for Employee Representation along with Shannon Monge. I also serve as a Student Service Analyst at SEC in coordination of the ACE Program. Next slide, please. As we traditionally do, we'd like to start our presentation off with thanking, with thank yous to those who have continued supporting Employee Representation and helping us succeed in the work that we are doing. First, we'd like to thank our HR teams for working with campuses as we begin to introduce the remote work policy. We know that HR teams have been working hard to help with communication and getting campuses in alignment to help this policy come to fruition. We would like to acknowledge the governing board members who spoke last month in support of DEIE and reminding us of the importance of serving students in our community. And last but not least, to all the employees of Maricopa who have continued to be supportive, flexible, and provide guidance to ensure student success as we still learn and grow through this pandemic. Next slide, please. We would like to introduce to you our employee representatives at our district office. Next slide. First, we'd like to introduce you to our non-exempt representatives, Donna Winston and Casey Takata. And I'll give you guys a moment to look over their bios. It's probably a very small print, so we apologize. And for our next slide, we have our exempt council representatives, Darlene Newman, Cassandra Mitchell, and Wendy Tobin. Donna Winston has continued to serve and lead since EGOC for representation at the district office. And all, and although the other representatives are new this year, they have brought so much value to Employee Representation, and we truly thank all of them for their time and service as they continue to represent employees at the district office. Next slide, please. For our staff and HR updates, we're continuing to work close with HR on communication about Mercer. We truly appreciate HR's efforts to be transparent with us as we patiently await the report. As the work continues to move forward, we look forward to reading Mercer's first report and continue to work collaboratively in the efforts. We appreciate HR's priority to provide open lines of communication for employees, to provide feedback and ask questions as we go through this process. We'd also like to take the time to remind employees that are listening today that the benefits annual open enrollment has been having town halls this month. Our last session will be on September 30th, and you can refer to the open enrollment site for recording and, and updates. Next page. For diversity, equity, and inclusion, their last DAC meeting was held on 9/20/2021. And we would like to, moving forward, also provide affinity series for upcoming sessions. So, our last one for September will be September 30th, 21. And for the month of October, they will be discussing employees with disabilities and LGBTQ+. Next slide, please. And for return to campus, per the chancellor's last email that was sent on September 10th, how we're moving forward with the telecommuting policy as well as the remote and virtual work policy. These are two separate policies that the district is providing to employees at this time, and it is important that we recognize that they both have two separate meanings. The telecommuting policy for COVID-19 will stay in effect as long as the pandemic persists. And next slide, please. And for the remote and virtual work policy, although October 4th was a public date, per the chancellor's email, the policy date may fluctuate based on campuses and where they are proceeding and how they are proceeding at each campus. And that is the end of my report. Thank you so much, Chancellor.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Student Life Reports. And this month, we have Scottsdale Community College by Gabby Coons and James Gasper, the co-chairs for the SCC Student, the CCE's Council of Student Leaders. Are you ready for your report?
Yes, we are. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of CEC, and guests. My name is James Gaspar, and I serve as the co-chair of the Council of Student Leaders under the Center for Civic and Global Engagement at Scottsdale Community College. I am here along with my fellow co-chair, Gabby Coons, to share a bit about what we're up to this past year as well as what we've already planned for this year. This is my first semester as a member of the Council of Student Leaders, also known as CSL. Gabby has had the opportunity to be involved for four semesters, and now, and now I consider myself learning from the best. Next slide. Please. As co-chair, I'm responsible for overseeing CSL's Civic Engagement Committee. It is my goal to help educate the student's body, honor the importance of being civically responsible citizens. For example, last year, CSL created several public service announcements educating our campus community on the importance of registering the vote and ultimately voting. Two weeks ago, CSL helped promote the week-long events that SCC, CGCC, and the District Office helped coordinate in the recognition of Constitution Day. From learning about the redistricting of our state to listening to a presentation by Maricopa County reporter Richter, we had the opportunity to better understand the constitution, about how the constitution affects us all. We are also excited to be able to collaborate with the SCC's services, learning, and leadership, American Indian Program, and the Intertribal Council of Arizona to promote voter engagement participation and advocacy by supporting a table at one event called the Social Cause Connection, or SCC, Student Experience, and another during the Native American Heritage Month. With the guidance of the Director of Community Engagement, Deanna Villanueva-Sorceto, we will educate our peers on how to communicate effectively with our legislative representatives on how to issue that, on issues that are important to us. This means more than signing a template letter and sending it by email. We will learn the best way to write a letter to advocate for a cause and try to influence decision-makers. Finally, our commitment continues to shine as we recently learned that we made the Washington Monthly's 2021 Best Colleges for Student Voting Honor Roll. Of the 205 institutions honored, SCC was one of the three recognitions, recognized in Arizona. We are beyond proud. Next slide, please. While CSL promotes engagement in local issues through Civic Engagement Committee, we also focus on the internal perspectives through the efforts of Global Awareness Committee. It is important to create an environment that helps the students educate global perspectives in order to navigate this globalized world successfully. Our Global Awareness Committee, overseen by our vice chair, Garrick Duarte, is responsible for the process of helping to plan our traditional International Education Week that will help take place in the, the third week of November, as well as collaborating on other SCC events that celebrate the inclusivity of our SCC campus. We hope you will join us for trivia night and try out your luck on your global IQ. Next slide, please.
Before we went remote in March 2020, CSL participated in several voluntary events as part of our mission for community service. Since we couldn't meet in person last year, our council came up with several ways to still comply with our obligations. In the fall, we made snuffle mats for shelter dogs at the Maricopa County Care and Control. If you don't know what a snuffle mat is, it is a brain game for dogs made of a rubber sink mat with fleece strips knotted through the holes of the mat. And in the spring, we made paracord bracelets that were then included in care packages to our troops and first responders. We cannot volunteer in person. While we cannot volunteer in person, I was proud of our council for finding meaningful experiences we could do from our homes yet together online. Next slide. I am proud to announce that CSL in the process, is in the process of organizing our fifth annual Arterchoke Pride Week, taking place from October 4th to the 8th. And yes, it'll be semi-virtual. Its planning will be overseen by myself as CSL co-chair and special events manager. This week, we will hold various events that promote our Arterchoke spirit, like the Artie Mile Walk, a second volume of Artie's Cookbook, and a friendly trivia game challenging everyone on who knows our fighting Arterchos in SCC the best. Oh, it's Artie's 49th birthday, so we have plans in the works to celebrate him too. Be sure to watch for our events and join us where you can. Next slide. Scottsdale Community College is home to many different clubs that range from the SCC American Society of Interior Design to the SCC Sonoran Desert Club to the Indigenous Students Association at SCC. These amazing clubs have allowed students to be engaged in events that cater to their specific field of study or personal passion, providing them opportunities to be exposed to an environment that will help them grow professionally. At our end-of-year annual club organization ceremony, we recognize clubs and individuals with awards such as Club of the Year, Club President of the Year, Advisor of the Year, and Most Innovative Program. We couldn't be prouder of the activities that our clubs offer to our student body to enrich their educational experience and are still creating amazing virtual and now hybrid events to keep members active and engaged. Next slide. I cannot go, I cannot go on with this report without introducing you to my fellow student leaders. Maybe, we may be small this year, but we are mighty. Two of us are returning leaders, and we welcome two new members. We are diverse in many ways and value each other's perspectives and amazing ideas. They have joined me this evening from their own homes to represent SCC and CSL. If you could see them, they'd all be waving right now. I cannot be more excited to be a part of this amazing and inspiring group. I'd be remiss if I did not mention that the challenge of conducting all these opportunities virtually and now in a hybrid format has stretched my own skill level. But nonetheless, I'm ready for the challenge, and I'm confident that our team of CSLers and I will be successfully accomplish, or I will successfully accomplish our goal of continuing to engage our fellow student body. Next slide. Lastly, we'd like to thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to share with you a little bit about SCC's Council of Student Leaders, what we've been up to and our plans for some coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coons and Mr. Gasper for the, you guys sound like you're pretty busy there at Scottsdale. We appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Next up, next up, we have Dr. Keisha Brock. We'll introduce our incoming student senators.
Good evening. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Keisha Brock, Associate Vice Chancellor of Student Affairs, and today it is my honor to introduce. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. It is my honor to introduce the student senators for the 2021-2022 academic year. As we are not able to gather in person, we have added the student senators' names, college, and photo to a slide. Next slide, please. And I will go through and read the name and also share with you which senators will serve as an officer. From South Mountain, Ms. Regina Webster. From Estrella Mountain, Aubrey Barclay. Carlos Apodaca from Gateway Community College. Carlos will serve as the deputy chair this year. Giovanna Benique from Paradise Valley Community College. Marsha Cotry from Chandler Gilbert Community College. Merna de Jesus from Scottsdale Community College. John Matthew Garcia from Glendale Community College. Savannah Shali from Mesa Community College. Emma Harlow from Rio Salado College. Emma will be serving as the secretary this year. And Martell Stevenson from Phoenix College. Martell will serve as the chair. Please join me in welcoming the student senators and thanking them for their willingness to support Maricopa Community College students. And I already pointed out who would be in the, the various offices.
Thank you. Okay. So, let's see, moving on, we've got the Emeritus Awards and recognitions tonight. Let's see. As we begin to step.
Dr. Narini, if you scroll down to, on the consent agenda, item number two is the Emeritus status, and that has the name of the professor being honored tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so tonight, we have one, as we begin to establish a new normal process across our system, one area we have begun to return to is recognizing outstanding contributions of our faculty as they retire from our system. Following the board meeting in which we have honorees, we will include an article recognizing the recipients in the Maricopa newsletter that will include a short profile. Our board assistant will forward the newsletter to all recipients. We are hopeful that we will be able to celebrate the distinctions in a more formal manner sometime in the near future. And so, let's see. And I, I'm not seeing the name.
Professor David Miller.
Oh, Professor David Miller. Thank you so much. So, tonight, we're recognizing Professor David Miller for all of his outstanding work in the, in the district. So, next up, we have the chancellor's report. Dr. Gonzalez, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am, Dr. Narini. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide a report. So, Dr. Narini, governing board members, CEC and guests that are on with us this evening. I've got two segments in my report, and one of them will be a discussion about Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the other will actually be an update provided by the foundation on their work up to this point. So, the state of Arizona is home to 22 federally recognized tribes. One such tribe is P'posh, or more commonly known the Maricopa, the namesake of our county and community college district. The district and its 10 colleges are situated on the traditional homelands of the Acumel, Odom, Odom, and P'posh, which, whose engineering skills laid the framework for the vast canal system that sustains the valley. It is only appropriate that on October 11th, 2021, Maricopa joins the many city-states, including Arizona, as well as colleges and universities across the country that have officially acknowledged Indigenous Peoples' Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day recognizes both the historical and present contributions and sacrifices of indigenous peoples in the United States. Maricopa acknowledges and respects the indigenous people who stewarded this land where we live, work, and learn. Maricopa also acknowledges the descendants of these original inhabitants who worked, teach, and learn in our system, and who through their various roles continue to fight for equality, justice, and a better future for the next seven generations. On this day, I invite you to learn more about the indigenous people and our area who strengthen and enrich our communities through their culture and traditions. As an educational institution, we have a commitment to honor and serve our indigenous students and tribal communities. Recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day is just one of many ways in which we demonstrate this commitment. This past year, our own United Tribal Employee Council, also known as UTEC, led a team of employees in formulating recommendations for how tribal land acknowledgements should be developed in our system. After consultation with subject matter experts, the recommendations were based on research and keeping true to indigenous beliefs. The goal of this work is to encourage learning and commitment rather than performing allyship. Acknowledging land sends a profound message about the relationship with and commitment to our native communities. The words are meant to be a living testament to the relationship with our native communities and the indigenous students we serve. Maricopa land acknowledgements should integrate our individual, programmatic, and college responsibilities to native employees, students, and communities. And as such, the recommendations are not a set of words for colleges to adopt, but rather a process by which each college develops their own tribal land acknowledgement through learning and understanding. Land acknowledgements are a journey, not a destination, just as recognized- Land acknowledgements are a journey, not a destination, just as recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day is a part of our organizational journey. I know that it's end of September, not October 11th yet, but this would be my only opportunity prior to that day to officially acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Days in Maricopa Community College District. Thank you, Dr. Norini. And with that, I will turn it over to Judy Lopez, and I believe Stephanie Hertzberg is with us as well. Judy or Stephanie, are you with us?
Dr. Gonzalez, this is Judy. Stephanie is sound on her computer, so just giving her a side or two.
Okay. Judy, are you prepared to, to carry on with the presentation if Stephanie is not able to get her sound to work?
Yes, doctor. She says that the sound is muted by the host. I can step in for Stephanie and hopefully she'll be able to join us before we're done. So good evening, Dr. Norini, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Judy Sanchez, and I am the Chief Development Officer at the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation. We are, from Stephanie, we have had a very, very successful year at the foundation. Our running goal was 5.7 million dollars. And we are just shy of 6.2 million for the fiscal year ending 2021. Our investment returns are also showing very, very strong returns. And so we just want to share that good news with you. And I should have said, I'm actually presenting what Brian Spicker would have done, and Stephanie. He is a very much deserved vacation, and so we hope he's enjoying his, his time off this week. So with that, Elva, you will progress to the next slide. Thank you. There's three areas that I'm going to share with you. One is about scaling the Maricopa Promise. Two is our work in transformational gifts, and finally, our planned giving. With that, Elva, you can progress to the next slide. The nation co-hosted an informational event along with the chancellor and the community college. It was very well attended by corporate, foundation, and municipal partners, and it acted as an information session to see what Mesa Promise Program had on trying to explore scaling of a promise program Maricopa-wide and working with our cities and our colleges to see what it would look like. Because it will, it will probably look different at each college. Also, want to acknowledge Dana Villanueva Sesseda, the Director of Community Engagement at the District, who did some big job coordinating and facilitating the promise event. And also Mesa Community College for sharing their knowledge and their success. The transformational gifts is that recently, the foundation had two incredible opportunities to support the district and our students through transformational gifts from PepsiCo and Bank of America, totaling $1 million. Both Brian Spicker and Dr. Gonzalez met with top executives from both organizations to secure these philanthropic gifts. These represent the latest success in the foundation's efforts to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion through scholarships, basic needs, wraparound services, and based experiences. The Bank of America grant focuses on scaling guided pathways and allowing us to build an ecosystem that narrows wage gap. Through outcomes for students of color, low-income, first-generation students will provide internship stipends and basic assistance with a concentration on career attainment in high-demand fields like education technology, cybersecurity, business, healthcare, and advanced manufacturing. Likewise, the Pepsi grant supports closing the wage gap and providing access to higher education for Black and Hispanic students through tuition, course materials and supplies, basic needs, and wraparound services. We are very grateful to our many district partners who helped in proposal development for both of these grants, who along with our colleges will help execute the deliverables. More transformational gifts are in various ages of cultivation, and we hope to report more good news in this era in the future. The final item I'd like to share with you this evening is planned giving. Cultivation and stewardship efforts by PC Development Director Deb Spotts, Development Officer Kristi Flora, former Alum Director Frank Luna, PC President, past and present, as well as Brian Spicker, have commented in the $1.7 million request from PC alumnus Jay Nern. It's the largest gift in the history of Maricopa from an individual donor, bringing his life and giving to 5.7 million dollars. What can I say? They was an incredible person. And his passion for this program is extraordinary. And his gift leaves a legacy for generations to come. As you can see, planned giving can have a transformational effect on colleges. Foundation has invested in developing and giving programs at every college and at the foundation level. I want to thank our college development officers and our presidents who continue to build their planned giving programs. I'd also like to thank the foundation team, all of that, who underbrought leadership, drive our success, and they make everything happen each and every day. I'd like to ask everyone to advance to the next slide and ask all of to just take a moment to read a testimonial. Oh, I have some pictures. I forgot about this one. This is Jay Paul there, both when he was a young man, a student, and, and then the later years. Next slide is a You just take a moment to read this testimonial from PCA student Kier Creek, or I'll give you a minute to take a look. And with that, I just want to put our presentation for the foundation, and I'm sorry that our foundation board president Stephanie Hertzberg could not join us, but thank you very much, chancellor, for giving us time to let you know what it's been up to.
It looks like Mrs. Hertzberg was able to get her mic working. If you want to say a few words before we conclude?
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Norini, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Stephanie Hertzberg, and I'm the Chair of the Maricopa Community College Foundation. My apologies for not being able to figure that out, but thank you. You know, I just wanted to say that these successes would not be possible without the trust and close partnership with the district and foundation. So thank you for all your support. And thank you again for the opportunity to present. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and thank you for all the work that you're doing and helping some of these students. Speaking of people who've joined us, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, I didn't, once this out earlier, she joined us just about five minutes into the meeting. And Ms. Nguyen, it looks like you might be, you may be a
I got here at 6:58 if we're counting, but yeah.
Okay, great, great. Thanks for joining us. Okay, next up, we have the citizens' interim. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on subsequent agenda. Presenting concerns to the board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect. Uncivil or disorderly conduct is not permitted. The use of diverse, divisive, and insulting language or the direction of remarks that defame, attack, or harass an individual may serve as cause for the board president to direct that speaker immediately to conclude his or her remarks. During COVID-19, please forward your comments to the board and to the assistant by emailing the governing board office at doml.maricopa.edu. We have not received any requests to speak at this time. So it looks like we I have not received a request up until this time, but it looks like we may have one. Do we have any citizens' remarks? No? Okay. So then we'll be moving along. Item F, the consideration of the consent agenda. We now move to the consideration of the consent agenda items. All items under this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Do any of the board members or the chancellor wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? One, one's? Nope. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, moved.
Second? That was Ms. Nguyen?
Second.
And second by Dr. Thor?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll do a roll call. Ms. Bittersmith?
Aye.
Ms. McGrath?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Dr. Thor?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So a vote of six-zero, the consent, consent agenda is approved. So announcement we have, members of the board, a request for your e-signature will be sent to your district district-issued email tomorrow morning to complete the process regarding the annual financial reports for Gateway, Early College High School, and Phoenix College Preparatory Academy. Please check your email for the request and e-sign the document at your earliest convenience, so it can be moved forward to the next board member as we close the loop of this transaction. Section G, there's no consent, non-consent action items, there are none. H, first reading of and information items. Are there any comments or questions? Nope. Monitoring reports. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, and we have the community linkage, the governing board reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Bittersmith. Do you have anything to report?
I do. Thank you, Dr. Norini. I simply wanted to give a brief update. There was a mention earlier in our meeting as we talked about the legislative agenda, about the Public Affairs Committee. I wanted to let the rest of the board know the committee has had several meetings, including those with our public relations, public information staff, and Dr. Gonzalez, looking at our systems and processes of looking at communications from the board and about the board through the system. Most importantly, though, as it was alluded to from Darcy, as we move forward on the legislative agenda, this is the committee that will be looking at that and gathering information and guidance from the board to help implement that, that plan as it moves forward into the next legislative session. That is my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGrath, do you have anything to report?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that I'm working with Ms. Sullivan on the agenda for our upcoming retreat, and I'm hoping to get those details finalized and shared with, shared with everyone shortly. It will include some opportunity for us to work on some of our policies, and I'm really looking forward to spending that time together. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thor, do you have anything to report?
I do. Today is National Voter Registration Day, and I received a message from Penny Sharon, President of the League of Women Voters Metropolitan Phoenix Chapter and the president-elect of the League of Women Voters of Arizona. She asked that I share with the governing board the league's gratitude to Mesa, Scottsdale, and South Mountain for allowing them to have a presence on those campuses to do the very important work of expanding the franchise. She specifically wanted to note the quick responses they receive from the civic engagement managers at each of the campuses. And for those of you who don't know, Penny is a retired Maricopa faculty member who's gone on to continue to serve her community through the League of Women Voters. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nguyen, do you have anything to report?
I do. At the beginning of September, I had the privilege of going to Flagstaff and being with somewhere between 1,100 and 1,200 college freshmen. And it was called Survivor Weekend, not sex trafficking Survivor, but Survivor like How to Survive College. And it was wonderful. And for the very first time, we had 40 representatives from our community college that were there, competing and participating and building teams. And I got to speak to the students, and, and it was just a privilege to be with our students who are navigating college during this time. And it was really exciting to know that we were participating with U of A and UNLV and just ASU, U of A, and some other colleges, and that our students were just in that environment. It was really wonderful to see, and they were really enjoying being participants in that. Secondarily, I'd just like to acknowledge the foundation for the great work that they continue to do. And to exceed your goal during a COVID environment is exceptional, exceptional. Exceptional, I can say that word. And to acknowledge all the great work that the foundation is doing and will continue to do. And finally, this month, I married off our fifth and final daughter, and it's been a blessing. And I just wanted to say that I continue to work with students across our district who are facing struggles COVID-related, and we will continue to do what's in their best interest. And I really appreciate the opportunity that, and acknowledge our students for whatever their challenges are, and that they continue to speak out and to figure out what is best for them. And it's just a privilege to continue to serve these students. So thank you.
Thank you. Did, let's see, Mr. Evans, did, was, are you with us? Nope. I guess that leaves me. I was excited to, to attend the groundbreaking at South Mountain Community College for the new science complex. It was a long time coming, and so a lot of thanks go out to Dr. Olson and Dr. Ottega and Dr. Levy for all the work that they've done to, to make sure we got to this point. So I'm looking forward to that science complex being, being completed. I was also able to, I want to thank Dr. Patrick and the panel for the excellent workshop they did this month on the critical race theory, you know, talking about what it is and what it isn't, more importantly, and how we can, we can work with that as educators. And the Diversity Advisory Council did a wonderful office hour session on DACA students. As you know, those, our DACA students are probably the ones that struggle the most with their education and paying for it and that sort of thing. So I really appreciate what they did to help educate the community on, on their, the students and their struggles. I also had a chance to, to tour Phoenix College Dental Clinic, and they have some great facilities and outstanding program, but I guess I'm not the only one who thinks so. Because Old Dominion University out in Virginia has now, I'm sure we all read about it, partnered with Maricopa to, to offer a seamless bachelor's degree in their online program for dental hygiene for our students throughout the district. So I thought that was pretty exciting. The last couple of days or a week or so, I've spent lots of my hours poring over some of the fees, and I want to really acknowledge Chandler Gilbert's accounting program and the Rio's math department for, for the work that they did with the fees to help lower the cost of our, for our students and their books and some of the fees that, that we've, we passed tonight, and saving our students hundreds of dollars in, in books. And I really appreciate
And I really appreciated the way Gateway's ophthalmology department broke down their fees and helped us as board members to understand how these fees are used and where they're, how they're broken down and what the students get out of it. But what I didn't appreciate is that the way some of the departments, when they, when they're processing or proposing fees for several classes, the way they just cut and paste the exact same description for multiple fee requests. I mean, this wasn't the first time this, this last session that it's happened. And then when the other departments, when they don't outline the fees well enough so that we understand what the fees are used for, how the students can expect their money to be spent. I mean, you all know who you are. And we all know that, that, you know, our students deserve better. So I appreciate if we can, you know, put a little effort into the request as we move forward. With that, I want to wish everybody a happy Hispanic Heritage Month and remind everybody to remind your students that Friday, October 1st, is the first day the FAFSA will be available for the next academic school year. So please remind them to get their FAFSA done starting this Friday. And so that concludes the board reports. Want to establish the establishment of the next meeting dates, times and places. October 19th, 2021 at 4:30, agenda review meeting. The board's October 19th board meeting will be conducted entirely remotely via WebEx events. There will be no physical meetings. October 26th, 2021 at 6:30, the regular board meeting. The governing board room at the District Support Services Center located at 2411 West 14th Street, Temp P 85281. Or the October 28th board meeting will be conducted entirely remotely via WebEx. So we haven't decided what we're going to do with that. So stay tuned for how the next meeting will be conducted. And with that, if there's no further discussion, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:20. Thank you all for showing up and paying attention and being part of our meeting this month. Thank you.